Welcome to the September 17th Transportation Master Plan Oversight and Outreach Committee Meeting. This is a teleconference meeting with Oversight and Outreach Committee members, city staff, and members of the public participating remotely to ensure proper social distancing in this federal, state, and local emergency. First, we'll do roll call. Subcommittee members that we have present are Diane Bailey, Andrew Barnes, Jackie Sebrian, myself, Betsy Nash, Jen Woolison, Henry Riggs, and we have several members who are absent, Chris DeCarty, Adina Levin, Ray Mueller, Sarah Staley Schenk, and Catherine Strel. Hopefully, some of them will be joining us later. Staff present, we have Public Works Director Nikki Nagaya, Acting Transportation Manager Kristi Ann Choi, Engineering Technician Patrick Palmer, and I see our City Manager, Starla Jerome Robinson. And Sarah Staley Schenk just joined us. And for the, from W-Trans, we have, let's see, Mark Spencer, Andre Hough, and Barry Bergman. So, first, we will go to regular business to approve the Oversight and Outreach Committee Meeting Minutes of April 23rd, 2019. Are there any comments about the minutes?
I move to accept the minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
Jackie Sebrian is seconded. And, Daph, how did you want to do the vote?
So, what we can do is, of eyes, and then anybody who wants to vote in the affirmative can wave or motion, since everybody's cameras are on, and then we can call for extension or any dissenters as well.
Okay, actually, Kristi Ann, did you want us to raise our hands now that I'm reading the notes? So, how about for eyes, please raise your hand if you are, would like to vote for the minutes. Okay, are there?
It looks unanimous.
And so, the meeting minutes are approved. The next item is to provide feedback and recommend to City Council to approve the prioritization strategy for projects identified as part of the Transportation Master Plan. And I believe that Kristi Ann Choi, Acting Transportation Manager, will introduce the item.
Yes, thank you. Chair Nash and Councilmember Nash, let me go ahead and share my screen. Okay, so, I hope you all can see that. Good evening, committee members. I'm Kristi Ann Choi, Acting Transportation Manager with the City of Mendel Park's Transportation Division, and also the Project Manager for the Transportation Master Plan. I'm also joined here tonight with Mark Spencer of W-Trans, who leads our consultant team that's working on the TMP. And so, just want to thank you all for being here tonight. I know it's been a long time since we all met together, and I hope you're all doing well. And, as you know, a lot has changed in the last year-plus since we met. We're now currently in the midst of a pandemic, and the transportation and economic conditions have changed quite a bit since we started developing the master plan. However, just wanted to point out that we did create the plan to be a living document, and so that it's going to be flexible and dynamic to allow for changing and future needs, so it's not something that is set in stone, we expect it to change and evolve over time. So, tonight, we're just going to go over, kind of like, the background of why we're doing this master plan, and then we're pretty excited to be sharing the draft TMP after this long process, and then, and with the next steps and the schedule. So, just to refresh everyone's memory of why we're doing the master plan, so this was actually something that came out of the general plan update, and it was the highest priority program coming out of the adoption of the general plan, part of the circulation element. And, in addition, the City Council has made this one of their top priority projects in their work plan over the last three years, so this is something that's been a priority for the city. So, the Transportation Master Plan is a citywide document. It is also including both large infrastructure projects as well as bicycle and pedestrian projects. It's going to serve as also kind of updating our sidewalk master plan and our bicycle development plan, so that we have one complete document that includes all of the infrastructure projects, whether it's large or small. And so, we have identified four goals for the master plan, and these were adopted by the City Council in March of 2019, and those include safety, sustainability, mobility choice, and congestion management, as shown on the screen, and all of these relate to policies that were identified in the circulation element, and also including the Climate Action Plan as well. So, just to go over some of where we came from, so this process started initially in 2017, and that's when W-Trans was selected as the consultant team to help us develop the Transportation Master Plan. Then, we also went out to the community in the summer of 2017 to kind of get some feedback on what the transportation issues were. The City Council also appointed you guys, the Transportation Master Plan Outreach and Oversight Committee, to kind of guide this process, provide advisory input, as well as keep the process on track, and reach out to the community to make sure that they knew about the plan, and that they provide their input and participate in the process. Then, in most of like 2018 and 2019, we kind of developed the different strategies, recommendations, projects, and also a prioritization strategy. And so, we had several meetings with you, the committee, as well as the Complete Streets Commission, and ended in June of 2019, where the City Council approved our prioritization strategy. And so, I think, the other thing, I guess we didn't really talk about a little bit, but there was also the Transportation Impact Program that was part of this process, and earlier in the, in the committee meetings, you had asked us to separate out the Transportation Master Plan and the TIP. Originally, we were going to do the TMP first, and then the TIP, but you wanted to do it kind of more on a parallel process. So, most of last year, in 2019, we worked on the TIP update, and so, this, the TIP was going to be one of the funding sources for a lot of these projects, and so that was adopted by the City Council in late 2019. And then, in last fall, we also had the second round of community engagement, that's where we went out to the community, we presented the projects, as well as the prioritization strategy, we had several types of engagement opportunities, we had an online open house, an in-person open house, as well as a few pop-up events, and we had, you know, approximately 1,200 participants, which is just a great turnout there. And then, since then, staff and the consulting team have been working to prepare the draft So, but just, this is why I just kind of highlights the outline of what the TMP document looks like, we have the goals and the issues that have been highlighted, the community engagement process, and the, what kind of projects were identified, as well as our priorities list in terms of the strategy that was used, as well as the implementation plan, and then there's several appendices that are attached to the document to help support the plan, as well as information that was used to develop the plan. So, these two slides are just kind of a snapshot of some of the pages of the TMP document. We tried to make it kind of a more user-friendly document, so it has a lot of pictures, images, graphics, and summary information. Oops, sorry about that. So, we hope that it was easy to digest, and also make it easier for the community to digest and understand what the plan's about. So, as I mentioned, the TMP has some appendices, some of it's really detailed technical information, but I wanted to highlight a couple of the appendices. One is the Transportation Toolkit. This includes, you know, a lot of the proposed treatments that were identified in the TMP, and it kind of includes some information about what those improvements are, and then provides some guidelines on how to implement them. And then, the other example, or other appendices I wanted to highlight are the Complete Streets example, and these show kind of like a example of cross-sections for the different types of street classifications that were listed in the circulation element. So, I just wanted to kind of remind you about what the prioritization strategy was. So, originally, we started with more than 190 recommended projects, and then we kind of grouped them into specific categories to help us to prioritize them. So, those categories are local, which are, you know, projects that are within the city, the city is going to lead those types of implementation, they're more spot improvements or infrastructure improvements, the citywide is kind of more policy-related, or projects that would affect kind of more on a citywide basis. Then, there's the straightforward category. These are projects that are relatively easy to implement, and so, we don't, and also lower in cost, and so, we don't expect that we need to prioritize those projects. And then, last, we have some regional projects. These are projects that are fairly large infrastructure projects. We, they, the effect more of, they're more regional in nature, and the city is not expected to lead them, will need to partner with other agencies, and so, again, we didn't prioritize those. So, the other, so the two categories that we prioritize were local and citywide projects, and those are in two priority groupings, and I'll talk a little bit more about those in some future slides. We just wanted to highlight the five regional projects, so you understand why those are separate. One's the Bayfront Multi-Modular Corridor project, that was one where we're looking at using the shoulders of Bayfront Expressway, and the peak hours to either Fort Transit. Another project is the Dumbarton Corridor project, that's looking at grade separations along Bayfront Expressway, and that would kind of also change some of the access along Bayfront Expressway. Then, Dumbarton Rail is kind of reactivating the Dumbarton Rail corridor, that would then connect up to the city, and then to the East Bay. The Dumbarton Rail Quarter Trail, that is kind of a ped bike trail that would parallel the Dumbarton Rail, and then the Caltrain Crossing improvements, those are the rail grade separation projects on Caltrain at Ravenswood, Oak Grove, and Glenwood. So, you might remember that we had seven prioritization criteria that we used to kind of evaluate the projects and put them in their two-tier buckets. The categories were safety, congestion management, greenhouse gas reduction, transportation sustainability, whether the project had a school nearby, whether the project was near to specific populations, as well as how it might be able to incorporate green infrastructure. So, the projects, they weren't scored in a numerical fashion, we used a more visual system, so that if the project, the filled circle kind of represents if the prioritization criteria was fully met versus a half-filled circle, then it's partially met, and then no circle means it didn't meet the criteria at all. And so, when we put them in the bucket, the projects in different buckets, as long as the project met at least one of the criteria fully, then we put in the tier-one bucket, and if they were all partially met, then we put them in the tier-two bucket. And so, just wanted to say, you know, the tier-one projects are considered high priority projects, even the ones that the city would want to pursue first. However, it doesn't mean that the tier-two, that all of the tier-one projects need to be implemented before a tier-two project would be constructed. Those tier-two projects are what we call opportunity project, so sometimes it might make sense, because the streets being paved, or a development's being constructed, where we want to do an adjacent project, because we want to capitalize on the construction that's going on at that time. And so, this table just kind of shows you the summary of all the different projects that are in each group, so we had a total of 157 projects. I think, as I mentioned earlier, we started out with over 190 projects, but some of those projects were not carried out to this number, because either they were funded projects, so we didn't need to prioritize them, because we already had money to get started, or the, they were being, they were either in construction or planned to be done by other development, and so, when we initially started this process, there were a lot of improvements that we wanted to show was happening around the city, and/or anticipated to happen, and so, some of those have actually been built, now that, now that we're kind of three years into the process. And as you can see, this is a pretty tall order, we have like $157 million worth of projects that are included in the TMP, and so, we need to figure out how we're going to fund those. Obviously, we can't fund all of those on our own, and so, we kind of have different ways to fund it. As I mentioned earlier, we had approved the Transportation Impact Program, so that would be one source that we would use. We would also look at potential grants or other taxes that we have collected, you know, from like Measure A or Measure W, and then we could also use our kind of general fund from the city to help pay for these. And so, this graphic just kind of shows how these, how the projects are broken out in our capital improvement plan, and so, this breakout right now is the adopted budget from the council, so 40, or 51%, I guess, of the pot is, and I guess this actually is not, this isn't correct in terms of the graphic, but the numbers are correct. And so, 51% of the CIP right now is related to streets and sidewalks, as well as transportation. And this, this is something that the council adopts annually. So, originally, we had, we have the agenda separated into two discussion items, the TMP feedback, as well as the next, and then separately, the next steps, but just for your discussion purposes, that it would be good for you to understand what's coming up, so just go over these quickly, and then you can have your discussion separately as we move forward. So, tonight, we're having the committees review the draft TMP, then in October, we're planning to go to the Complete Streets Commission and get their comments and feedback on the TMP, and then the plan is to go to the City Council to adopt the TMP on November 10. So, then, just kind of highlighting what happens after we adopt the TMP. So, as I mentioned, the straightforward projects, we didn't prioritize, we expect that a lot of them can be done within the next five years, and so, we would just have part of our transportation budget used to help implement those. We also have the tier-one projects that we would then start looking at based on, you know, funding availability, staff resources, how that might affect putting them into the 2021, 2022 CIP budget, as well as the next five years coming up. And then, we will continue to look for grant opportunities, and how that might align with the projects that we have listed, and where we might be able to maximize our funding resources. And then, at the end of the TMP document, we also included a process of how new projects were added. As I mentioned, we were trying to make this kind of a dynamic and flexible document, and so, the framework that we have laid out for you tonight, and in the, and the TMP, is how we use, or how we would evaluate new projects as they are proposed by either members of the community, or commission members, or City Council members. And so, so lastly, I just wanted to end with here, some of the feedback that we are looking for from the committee, you know, do you agree with the readability of the plan, how, if you have any other suggestions, and how we could get the word out to the community that plan's getting ready to be adopted, any comments on the funding and implementation strategy, and then ultimately, a recommendation to City Council on whether we want them to go ahead and adopt the master plan. So, that concludes my presentation this evening. Happy to take any questions now. As I mentioned earlier, Mark Spencer from W-Trans can also help, is available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi Ann. Are there any clarifying questions from the committee before I take public comment? I cannot see, so... There we go. Andrew Barnes?
Hi, good evening. Kristi Ann, thank you so much for that presentation. The document looks fabulous. Would you be so kind, the overall TMP document and your presentation as well, would you be so kind as to go to slide 15 again, please?
Is this the one you're looking for?
It is, thank you. I'm just getting an idea of what it says. So, a citywide project cannot reside in tier-one, is that correct?
No, that, we actually did put citywide, so this project, or this, this slide kind of pulls out the citywide separately, but we do have some projects that are tier-one for citywide, and some that are tier-two. I think it's about a, maybe like a 10 and 14 split. I can't remember now which one had the 10, but I think it was the tier-two might be 10, tier-two, 10 citywide projects.
Okay. If you were to break that out, then adding citywide into tier-one, that would bump up to about 87 million, if I'm understanding you correctly, and then, and then a piece of regional, would that also get distributed across tier-one and tier-two?
So, the regional projects are kind of separate on its own, because they will have their own timeline, you know, will need to partner with other agencies and stuff, so we're not kind of grouping it with the tier-one. But then, just a correction on the, the cost in terms of the tier-one cost, for the citywide, when I said 10 and 14, I was actually talking about the number of projects, I don't actually know about the breakdown on the cost.
Well, I see, right. So, it's going to be a certain allocation, which would fall tier-one, and just from a numeric dollar standpoint, a certain amount of money, which would fall for tier-two.
Correct.
And then, on straightforward, that is neither, that's none of the above, because that's the, those are the ones that will be tackled first. Am I understanding that correct?
So, the straightforward ones, they, yeah, we would, they fall in a different bucket, we wouldn't necessarily put them as part of the, like, individual CIP project, but we have a kind of a fund where we do some standard kind of transportation projects over the course of the budget year, and so, we would do those over like the next five years.
Okay. And when you were talking about this slide, you were talking to some of the, from this slide going to the next slide, you were talking about some of the economic challenges and the change in economic circumstances, and I am assuming that to mean less money coming in and being made available for going after this list. Am I understanding that correctly?
Oh, yeah, that's correct, that, you know, there's definitely going to be, there's, I mean, obviously, we're seeing some revenue challenges within the city's budget, but there are also grants that, you know, definitely look at projects that have been adopted into a plan, so that also makes, you know, once we have a Transportation Master Plan adopted, that will also help get us additional points when we apply for grants for certain projects. And so, I think they may be more competitive, because, of course, a lot of cities are going through some budget challenges, but we'll also have, you know, some, some points by having, you know, a plan adopted, and something kind of close, ready, ready to go.
Okay. And then, if you'd be so kind, just to go to the next slide, too, 16, please. So, this, when you guys were walking into the TIF, and the approval of the TIF, and the forecasting of TIF fees, TIF-associated revenue being a function of development, so let me walk backwards into that. So, the TIF is a function of fees associated with stuff coming out of the ground, is that correct?
Yeah, so, we have a, the TIF is related to new development, or, you know, additional, like, expansion of existing development, and so, that was kind of, the improvement projects, though, can only, you can only account for their share of the improvement, or, I mean, sorry, the TIF can only account for the development share of the improvement, they can't... They can't pay for a full improvement unless we can show that the improvement was required only by the development.
Right, okay. And I won't take time for this now, but I'll double back to the question on what it looks like now in terms of what your thoughts are in terms of TIF-associated funds versus what you had forecasted and how that's changed. We don't need to address that now, but I'll, I'll ask that a little bit later after public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. And I might note that Ray Mueller and Adina Levin, I believe, need to be promoted to panelists, please, as they have now joined their the committee.
I'd just like to confirm that Adina is under the username Seamless Bay Area. Is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Nash, it's, I don't know if you can see me.
Yes, no, I can't. So thank you very much, Jen Wolison.
Hi, I have a question about new projects that may be added after the TMP is approved. So, for example, I heard recently from someone who pointed out, you know, why aren't there sidewalks on both sides of Ravenswood by MA High School? So if, if that was a project that the community wanted to add, so kids leaving MA High School on the, I guess, the north side of the street, could walk on a sidewalk. Can you please explain to me the process for what that would look like? Because it looks like it would just enter into a CIP process, but it wouldn't actually be added to any list until five years goes by. Is that correct?
So, so we would evaluate the project based on kind of the prioritization criteria that we, that I mentioned earlier. And we would determine whether it meets, you know, a tier one or a tier two kind of status. And then we can look at whether that should, if it does need to be a tier one project, we can also then look to the city council to include it in a future CIP process. So it's, I'm just trying to, I can find the, I had a graphic.
Is it this one?
Sorry. Yes, that one, yeah.
So, so I guess, I guess my question is, if the document's living, do new projects ever get added onto project lists? Or they only kind of live in the nether and come in when CIPs are discussed?
Yeah, so we wouldn't expect to kind of update the actual TMP document, but I think the CIP is something that gets reviewed annually. So we would just review it as part of the CIP process. So, you know, we do expect that we, over time, we would update the full TIP, the TMP document, but we would expect that to, you know, be like five to seven years from now, not every year.
And so this, this is Nikki, if I could just add one, one point on to that. So in that context, what we would do is, is use the prioritization strategy and framework that's been adopted in the TMP to assess that new project request compared to what's already been identified in the master plan. So that we have a framework to then assess the pros and cons of which project should move forward and how they rank against each other in terms of the, the overall criteria that have been established in, in this process. So.
Yeah, I guess one of the, what I'm getting at is if the TMP is this, you know, robust collection of projects that we have kind of top of mind, so the transportation staff doesn't have to keep all these different spreadsheets of different things floating around, new projects would still kind of live in this floating space a little bit and wouldn't be kind of codified in the TMP until it's refreshed or it gets put into a CIP.
Yeah, so, yeah, but we use, I mean, we use the spreadsheets as a way to keep things organized anyway. So I would just be part of that system. We wouldn't actually put it in a, the, the document until it's actually, it's fully updated.
Yeah, I guess my question is for community members who want to know what's in the queue and what, what the staff or the city is aware of or thinking about addressing. I feel like it would be nice to have some repository as new things are kind of brought to attention that can kind of be an addendum or someplace that's publicly accessible so people can see. So they're not, you know, bringing up the same issue over and over again. That, that's kind of what I'm getting at. But I'll save the rest of my comments for the comment time. Thanks.
Just one last note on that. The north side of Ravenswood Avenue is actually in the town of Atherton. So that is a, just a blanket project would not be in our transportation master plan as, as it currently exists.
Hey, this is Sarah Staley. I have a question, so, Sarah Staley-Chenk. So that brings up an interesting point that was just top of mind for me. So when, so much of what we've invested in, in this plan has regional implication, and it's dependent on the communities that we certainly are bordered by. And that's continued to be sort of a, a point of just concern for me that I don't know has expressly been addressed in many of our meetings in a way that I'm really comfortable with. Can you share with me again, whether it's in the documentation or just audibly for everybody here, how we intend to mitigate so much of these concerns that truly are the result of, you know, whether it's corporate presence or Palo Alto, Redwood City, and through traffic in a way that Menlo Park can truly make a difference or needs partnership in order to do so?
No, I'm not. So I guess I'm, I'm not quite understanding your question.
My question is, is that so many of the different things that are in the TMP that we're trying to address do have, are the result of, or do have actions that are required of us that are not just Menlo Parks perhaps to solve for, but also are Palo Alto, Redwood City, and East Palo Alto, or our businesses that have a huge impact. It's not just on Menlo Park to solve these issues. And so I'm continually concerned about how are we in fact working with our neighbors as partners in which to mitigate and come up with solutions that are not just solely for Menlo Park or, or on Menlo Park to solve for, but are also bridging our communities or counties neighboring us in a way that we think we're going to be truly effective?
Okay, so, so one, in terms of like projects that are developed within Menlo Park, and, you know, some of that is done as part of the, you know, the, the sequel process, our kind of development review process and the tip. So that's kind of how the development part is paying for their share, but for projects that are outside of Menlo Park. And that's where some of those, like those five regional projects that we identify, those are the ones that we're going to have to work with other agencies on how they would be implemented and also how they would be funded. I mean, it would definitely not be something that the city would fund on, on it, so.
Okay.
Oh, Betsy, I think you're unmuted.
Oh, that's what you're talking. Are there any more clarifying questions? Adina Levin, please.
Adina, you're, you're muted.
Okay, great. Can you hear me now? So I have two questions about the implementation of this plan. And so one has to do with the Climate Action Plan, which of course, the city council has approved recently and after this draft was put together. But there certainly are greenhouse gas emissions attributes of these different projects and vehicle miles traveled implications of these projects. So my first question about implementation is how does staff see the process for potentially utilizing the Transportation Master Plan to help implement the Climate Action Plan? And how would the project selection process, how might the process, project selection process be influenced by the goals of the Climate Action Plan? And that is one, question number one of two about implementation that I have.
Yes, so one of the goals of the, the TMP is sustainability and it relates to, you know, working to meet the Climate Action Plan goals. And then also, one of the prioritization criteria includes reducing greenhouse gas emissions. And so I think we would look at both, you know, as we, as I had shown in the prioritization strategy, we identify what projects that fully meet that greenhouse gas reduction or sustainability goal. And so we would look at those as potential ones that we could use to help meet the Climate Action Plan goals as well.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a different, another question about implementation and then, and then we'll have some comments about implementation when we get there probably. So the other limitation is there are, this is very lovely section at the end, which is about that, the toolkit that has some really nice contemporary design treatments that really come from things that have come forward over the last decade or so about complete streets treatments where the state of the art really has changed over the last decade. And so that is really great to see in this section. And my question is, how does that section of that toolkit relate to the more detailed standards that staff uses to actually implement projects? So what is the connection to them? Are they completely decoupled? Do we have these lovely modern pictures and then some completely different manual that's done, used to do projects? Or are there connect, some connection between the two?
Yeah, so the, but, you know, they're, they're kind of, they're both related to each other and we would use both as we design and implement the projects. The toolkit is, is more guidance and provide it much more user-friendly. It helps to explain to the community members what we're talking about in terms of the projects. And the standard details are definitely more technical and they provide, you know, standards for those who actually design them for engineering and, you know, whatever might be, you know, utilities issues, drainage issues, that kind of thing. But we are also in the process of updating our standard detail. And so as we do that, we will make sure there's, you know, no conflicts between the two documents. But, but yeah, they should, they, they kind of work handed.
Okay, great. So that means that like if there's a new concept in the toolkit, like a protected intersection, which probably didn't exist when the last generation of standards were developed, that when the standards are updated, they will be updated to then, you know, define in more technical detail what it would mean to implement a protected intersection. So do I understand that correctly?
So, I mean, our standard details are probably, we probably don't include everything that's in the toolkit. And because something like a protected intersection, we won't have a lot of them in the city. So we'll probably look at kind of some, like, either state or county guidance or guide standards on those. Because, because we, most of our standard details are stuff that we built kind of more regularly within the city. You know, curb around sidewalks, driveways, things that happen a lot more than something like a protective intersection.
Okay, so what would be an example of a standard that might be updated to match the new toolkit guidelines?
So it could be potentially curb extensions or the different pedestrian, pedestrian crossing treatments, sidewalks.
Storm, storm drain placement is, is another, like where, where you place the drain inlets on a corner in relationship to the curb ramp and the pedestrian crossing. So you don't want a drain inlet where you're going to step off the, the corner into a crosswalk, those types of things.
And are some of the new kinds of protected bike lanes in there too, in terms of things that might get updated in the standards that are new in the toolkit?
I don't know about protected bike lane. I know we have some information, maybe about green, green treatment.
Yeah, the, the city doesn't have standards that we've adopted for bike lane design practices. We, we default to the statewide and federal standards. So inasmuch as the protected guy, the protected bike lane designs exist in the ASHTO guides and NACTO, we, we use those sources. We don't have our own standards for, for bike lane design.
Okay, got it. Thank you. The, the Complete Streets Commission may get into more wonky detail on this topic, but I wanted to, like, ask that question at a higher level here. So thank you.
Thank you, Adina. Jen Wolison.
I apologize for going again, but I, I wanted to ask a question about congestion management because it's a, a theme and a topic that runs through the TMP. And I noticed it being used in, in different ways. And I just wanted to know how you decided to use it in which way. So, for example, on page sixteen of the TMP, when it's talking about the goal, it says, manage traffic congestion to reduce travel time on city streets, minimize cut-through traffic on neighborhood streets, including the encouragement of the use of low emission modes such as walking, biking and transit, and prioritizing the safety of children, seniors and the public. But then later on page sixty, when it's talking about how to measure the success of the different goals, the measurement of the success of congestion management, first of all, it becomes congestion reduction, not congestion management. And then the way it will be measured is to reduce delays. And it talks about queuing, travel time and traffic operations. And this, this kind of happens throughout the, the thing. And I'm wondering which is the default and how you decided when to use which definition and, and, and how to, how, how you're defining congestion management throughout the document and how it's going to be measured and prioritized?
Yeah, so I think one of the things we used, what, I mean, so, so I guess go back a little bit. So first, the council, city council had adopted this into what, as one of the goals for the TMP, and they provided the language that we're using for that. And so we're trying to kind of reflect that goal throughout in terms of like, and we can look in terms of how, how the terminology is used throughout the document. But I think one of the things was to try to keep the traffic more on the regional roadways as opposed to neighborhood roadways. And so there is some element of delay reduction that we want to look at for some of those major streets in order to keep, you know, keep the public, the traveling public on those streets as opposed to using the neighborhood streets. So that's, I think, one aspect of that, of how we were looking at congestion management. I don't know, Mark, if you have anything else you wanted to add?
Yeah, I'll chime in just a bit. And I understand that, you know, in this document, much like the word traffic can be used and interpreted different, in different ways to different folks, so can the word congestion. In this case, we're using congestion relief and management a bit interchangeably. But you know, as you pointed out, and I'm going to refer to the document and it's on page, it looks like page 42 of the document where, you know, in terms of prioritization criteria and how we're interpreting congestion in terms of looking at projects and which ones to move forward, you know, congestion relief and management, projects that reduce travel time on city streets and minimize cut through traffic on neighborhood streets. Those are actually two separate things, travel time and minimizing cut through traffic. And then projects that are, were evaluated based on anticipated magnitude of benefit to residents and drivers in Menlo Park. So congestion management projects include things like, you know, roadway geometric changes, do you add a travel lane or traffic signal modification, upgrading from a change in traffic control from an unsignalized intersection to a signal, for example, or even the grade separations, you know, railway crossings. So there's a, there's a range in there in terms of congestion relief projects. The council was pretty direct with us in terms of making sure that that was one of the criteria that we were looking at. And particularly on, not just travel time, but protecting neighborhoods and keeping travel and traffic on the streets where they should be occurring. So not through local neighborhoods, but on the, you know, arterial streets to the extent possible. So there's a combination of different things when looking at the word congestion and the balcony.
Yeah, I understand that. I was just looking at the council approved wording of congestion management, which maintains the, that to prioritize the safety of children, seniors and the public and encouraging low emission modes such as walking, biking and transit. And then when you look at the interpretation on the, on the other pages, there seems to be some potential inconsistency and conflict there. And I was just curious how, how you went from the council defined definition to some of those detailed metrics and other items.
Right. And, you know, we have broken out safety as a separate item, which is something that was, you know, of the, of the different prioritization criteria. So we were looking at all of the things that the council brought forward in terms of how do we look at the projects and put them through that ranking criteria and the, you know, the bubble chart as Christian showed in the example. And trying to see how many of these different categories does this satisfy when looking at any individual project? When we last met with the OOC and we had the list of projects and then we went through the engagement process, the list of projects has also been modified so that more of them are now in tier one and fewer of them are in tier two, kind of as a result of looking at this and massaging it through the criteria and the prioritization of what's important. So there's, I think there's a, we could go through the document again and take a look at the semantics of it to make sure that we're being consistent in how we're applying the word congestion. And that's a fair comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. And welcome to Catherine Strel, who's now joined us. Andrew Barnes.
Hi, thanks again. So I pulled up the December 10th, 2019 Transportation Impact Fee item from the City Council meeting. And I'm looking to get a little clarification on utilization of, of the TIF. And I think it was you, Christiane, who said earlier, the TIF being restricted, the expenditure of a TIF associated with a specific development being largely allocated towards the impacts that could be directly ascribed to that specific development. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
So it's, I mean, it's aggregated together. So all like development, if the improvement can be attributed to development or the need for it can be attributed to development, then it could be considered something that could be fully funded. But if there's already an existing deficiency, then only a portion of the improvement can be funded by development. So it's just the portion that's for new development, but the existing deficiency needs to be funded in other ways. And that's the nexus that's required in terms of being able to do a traffic impact fee program.
Okay, so let me back into this question. If there is a preponderance of development, say for instance, in the Bayfront area, and you've got other needs outlined in, that are not in that area, can the fees that get generated by a new development in Bayfront be used on a TMP project that is unrelated to that and cannot be directly correlated with the impact?
Yes, so because we did a citywide Transportation Impact Fee, any of the Transportation Impact Fees collected can be used for any of the projects that were identified in the fee program. So regardless of where, who, who provided the money, I mean, or what development provided the money, as long as it was in the program, then we can use it to help pay for that project.
Yeah, but just, just as a matter of our budgeting practices, we do try to correlate the improvements that we're bringing forward in the, in the CIP that are funded through the TIF with where the needs are. So if the needs have been concentrated around that new development area, then we look to try to prioritize them accordingly too. So that, that's part of the budgeting review process and where we're, where we're bringing things forward for advancing them into the designing construction stages.
And if you've got a preponderance of new development in one part of the city, and you've got a TMP which talks about projects that are in another part of the city, are you, am I hearing that the TIF that's being generated by the new development, if it's over here in this part of the city, may not be allocated to what is a tier one project, which has been designated as being worthy, but isn't correlated to where the development's happening? And I just want to get clear about that.
So I think, I mean, I think we're going to be looking at many factors. So it's probably not as simple as you're stating it. We would be looking at both the development, what other projects are going on in the area, what, you know, and that's just on the funding side. We also have kind of staff resources, you know, different projects require different skillsets. And so it may make sense that a project that, a different project could be, you know, managed by one set of staff and then a different, you know, in a different part of the city and another. So I think there's going to be a multitude of factors that we'd be looking at in terms of figuring out which ones we would wear in the city and also how we would budget those. And I think Mark wants to also add something?
Just briefly, we did consider this in the TMP document. And so the TMP document implementation deliberately brings in flexibility so that the TIF is one of the funding sources, and it's a, it's a big funding source. And the TIF puts money into a general pot that is held for all of the transportation improvements collectively. And it was also, and we debated this actually prior meetings with the OOC, the projects within each tier are not ranked or prioritized to say, this is number one, this is number two, this is number three, they have to go in that order. There has to be discretion, not only at staff level, but at council level to say, this is the projects we want to move forward and where can we leverage other opportunities? And how do these projects fit with each other? I think as Nikki said, yes, there's generally a correlation between where the money is coming from, which particular projects and which, and where they might be directed in terms of funding certain improvements. But there needs to be flexibility in terms of how to actually move projects forward and actually get things done. So sometimes you can generate money, but you can't fund a certain project, but you can fund perhaps, or finish funding three others. There might be some value in that. So it's definitely designed for flexibility for the council and for staff.
And one, sorry, one last point that my dog would like to make tonight is that
I like the agreement.
The perfect, perfect timing. So the TIF also, as Christiane summarized earlier, it only funds a portion of the projects that would be needed, that were identified in the Nexus Study and the FEI program because the city has to then make up the difference in terms of any existing deficiencies. That, that also means that what we're often doing with TIF funding is leveraging it to apply for grants and look to expand the pot of money using those local TIF dollars and go out and pursue countywide, regional, state and federal grants to bring more dollars in for what we can, can then deliver. So the FEI program would not, I'll use the middle crossing, the tunnel under the Caltrain tracks as an example, the FEI program would not be able to fully support the construction of that project, even though it's identified in the FEI program. So what we would need to do is use a portion of the TIF funds and then go out and look for additional money from other sources in order to actually deliver it. Because otherwise, the FEI program won't cover all the, the projects that have been identified and identified for needs around the city going, going forward.
And I know that we've talked about that pie of TIF and general fund and grant money. If we take the big ones out, the big infrastructure projects out, like for instance, a grade crossing, grade separation, and talk about like the tier ones, do you have any sense of what that pie looks like? Is it, of course, is a generality. For every dollar of TIF, you're, yeah, so every dollar, you've got 30 cents TIF, 30 cents grant money, 30 cents, you know, general fund money. How does that work? Because we've talked about it augmenting one another. Outside of the big infrastructure stuff, do you have any sense how it works at a municipal level?
Actually, can I break in at this point? I think we're going beyond clarifying questions and I know we have some public comment and people are waiting. Would you mind, Andrew, if we answer that after we take public comment?
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. And I know, Henry Riggs, you had wanted to, you had your hand up. Do, would you mind holding till after public comment or would you like to ask your question right now?
Actually, I had just muted with the hope that we would move forward and I would save my comment for later.
Thank you so much. So do we have any public comments tonight? I believe we do, Patrick.
Yes, thank you, Chair Nash. I'd also like to just announce really quickly, for the members of the public who are in attendance and wish to provide public comment, after the chair calls for public comment on the item you would wish to speak on, please engage the raise hand feature. I see we have one of those already. I will then have the ability to open your microphone and you can provide your public comment to the Complete Streets Commission. We also do have another option, if you do not have a working microphone, you can type your comment into the chat feature and I will be able to read it out loud. So it looks like we do have one person with their hand up. Katie Beruzzi, you are now the public speaker.
Great, I think I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. So Katie Beruzzi, I've been on the Complete Streets Commission, but I'm not speaking for the commission, just myself. I loved reading this. I loved the framing. It was great to see how it was tying together different goals that our city has had around climate action and Vision Zero with sort of the more practical projects of allocating the public right of way to move people around. So that's great. There were a couple of things I was missing though, and I was wondering if they were there and I just didn't see them, or if they were, it was too late to integrate them. One was that you have these great visuals of how, of like different kinds of streets, boulevards, neighborhood collectors, et cetera. And at one point, I think it's actually in Connect Menlo, there's like actually a map of the city that shows what those different kind of streets actually look like. So for example, that, you know, Monte Rosa is a neighborhood collector or a neighborhood, I don't remember exactly what the designation is, and something else is a bike boulevard. I think that might be actually a really useful thing to include because, again, people are going to want to see, what does this mean for my neighborhood? What does this mean for my street? I'd also love to see, I did a search throughout the document for the words republic right of way, I didn't see them. And I'm looking at these beautiful visuals of like what our sidewalks should look like. And I'm also acutely aware of a recent discussion we had in Complete Streets Commission about a sidewalk that we're trying to put on a really important connector street that, you know, gets people access to a middle school, a shopping center with a grocery store, hundreds of apartments, et cetera. And unfortunately, there's really, in the, with the way the street is currently designed, there's really not space to put the quality of sidewalks that we are aspiring to elsewhere in the city, the kind of sidewalk that I saw our city manager walking on, on Santa Cruz Avenue two days ago when we biked by, that, you know, the kind of sidewalk that we have, that we aspire to, the ones we see in this, in this project. And that's because we're not considering the full public right of way. And, and, and in many cases, unfortunately, I think we're sort of prioritizing existing sort of encroachments on the public right of way over the ideal that we're setting forward in these kinds of plans. So I know it's a tall order, but I'd like us to at least consider the public right of way when we're looking at these plans and call that out in a document as important as the Transportation Master Plan. It's like one of the most important roles our city has, our city council has, to take these, the public right of way and allocate it fairly so that it benefits the highest number of citizens and gets people places safely and conveniently. And I just, you know, just the way I think people should be able to build what they want to on their own private property, I think we as a city should be taking seriously our responsibility here when it comes to the public easements that we should be using to make good sidewalks. And I have one other thing, which is to say, we'll talk about this in Complete Streets probably, but the NTMP seems a little bit anachronistic, considering the sort of fairness principles and the efficiency principles that I see espoused throughout the TMP. To me, it seems like a neighborhood with a bunch of apartments, that's probably not going to organize to get speed bumps, but might have a higher accident rate than another neighborhood where everybody is like on a list served together and they can get it all together. I don't think that that organized neighborhood should necessarily be able to claim more of a staff's time and the city resources than the neighborhood where objectively there are more accidents. And so I'd like to see us moving in the direction of fairness and equity and like efficient use of public resources. Thanks, that's all. And really though, great job. Looks great.
All right, thank you, Katie. It looks like next we have Eric Morley. And I'm actually going to share the timer this time so that you're all able to see it. And Eric, you are now the public speaker.
Thank you very much, Chair Nash and committee members. Just thank you very much for holding the meeting this evening. I hope you and your families and the professional staff and consultant teams' families are both well and safe during these times. And again, wanted to thank the committee for holding the meeting here on behalf of Willow Village. And I think as many of you know, we've been working for many years with the city and , and community to come up with a community driven plan. And we're very excited about the most recent updates and improvements that we shared in May. And when we did that, we also shared that we are continuing to be committed to Menlo Park and our Bell Haven neighbors and the broader community. And we look forward to working with committee members here, council members in the broader community to help implement the TMP. We currently estimate that Willow Village will contribute approximately $40 million to the TMP through TIF fees to help fund and really catalyze and advance the program. Just to give you some context, that's about 50% of the private sector contribution to the overall plan, almost 100% of the private sector contribution to the tier one and 25% of the overall funding for the plan. And we really want to ensure that a number of critical transportation, safety, sustainability, mobility and congestion management projects that are in our Bell Haven neighborhood are fully funded through the program and prioritize those with funding from Willow Village. And again, would just like to thank the committee. And again, would just like to thank the committee and look forward to continuing our partnership with the city as we move forward with Willow Village. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Eric. Next up, it looks like we have Josie Gayard. I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. Hi, Josie, you're now the public speaker.
Okay, great. Yeah, Gaylord, that's fine. First of all, thank you for the work that's been done on the Transportation Master Plan. So I serve on the Environmental Quality Commission, although I'm speaking just for myself. Although the commission has been coordinating with the Complete Streets Commission on the issues arising in the TMP. I just wanted to say, you know, we are in the middle of a climate crisis, which is perhaps, you know, the, will be the issue of our generation, probably the next 30 years, struggle of our time. And you may not realize this, but you, on this committee, actually hold a lot of sway and a lot of power over what Menlo Park does to try to achieve its carbon reduction goals. There's a lot of evidence to show that cities across the globe that are trying to tackle climate change, one of the things that they do well is they get people out of cars and they, in fact, redesign their cities to be inviting and encouraging to people on bikes and people who want to walk. Which, when you look at vehicle miles traveled and the impact of vehicle emissions, this is almost our biggest lever that we have to try to achieve our climate goals. So one thing that I engaged with the TMP process and just gave my own feedback as a resident, maybe a year ago, but something I'd really like to see, and maybe this is in the plan and I just haven't seen it, but sort of a more holistic look at trying to create a network of interconnected paths for, that are protected. So that, again, throughout, throughout the city, so people know, you know, if I want to get across town, it's very clear how they can do that in a way that's safe, that's, you know, protected by both, you know, trees or grass in addition to, you know, not just paint. So I want to really encourage you to think creatively, again, because of the crisis that we're in, to think creatively about how do we, you know, move our city towards something that is going to be more sustainable and where we can actually achieve these very ambitious climate goals that we've set for ourselves? Just remember that you hold a big piece of the puzzle here. So I would encourage you to please use it wisely. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I believe that is all the public speakers that have their hand up. We did have Eric Morley talk before. I'm not sure, I think he has his hand up still previously. I guess we could wait a minute to see if there are any others as well. As I mentioned, if you do have a public comment, just press the raise hand button and I'll be able to access your mic. Any takers? All right, it looks like that's it. I will turn it back to you, Chair Nash.
Thank you so much, Patrick. So now we have, we'll open for committee discussion. And I wonder if Andrew Barnes would like to start off, given that we were in the middle of his questions before.
I thank you. No, I think I've got a good idea. I'll double back, but I want to be sure to give some of my fellow colleagues the opportunity to speak as well. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone who would like to have any questions? Henry Riggs?
Well, are we moving ahead at this point?
For discussion.
And comments? Oh, very good.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Nash. So we have already, I realize, expressed almost exclusively difficult questions to staff. And I apologize if this is yet another one. I'll try to frame it so that it's more likely to elicit a direct, or is deserving of a direct comment. I did want to follow up on Jen's question regarding congestion management with a suggestion. I did certainly notice last year that when the four goals were clarified, unlike the first three goals, the fourth goal expressed the need for congestion management. And then, for some reason, qualified it by saying, but of course, this depends on pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Given that goals can stand on their own and they can stand next to other goals, I wondered if it wouldn't be just as reflective of council's intention if we simplified the congestion management goal by removing the last sentence and simply saying that this goal deals with congestion management, whereas goals one, two and three deal with other aspects that that the council has directed should be goals. I think that would avoid the, the very logical question that Jen raised, and it would also perhaps avoid the difficulty in answering that we heard from staff. So perhaps, if I may through the chair, is that something I should direct to Mark?
Certainly, or any?
Or to the chair.
Or to, no, 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 or to other staff.
Well, I do want to reflect, of course, council's intention. So if, if by saying that a goal can stand on its own and actually conflicts with council's intention, I hope you would let me know.
So I would, I believe that council did make the recommendation as such, and I think it would be difficult to change that goal to anything other than what was voted on by council. Perhaps Councilmember Mueller would like to say something?
Yeah, certainly.
I can't see anyone.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Nash. My take on this, this evening and just as a general, as a, as a general explanation too, is this evening, as a council member, I am not going to be voting. I'll be abstaining at the end. And the reason why Henry is specifically actually relates to the question that you just gave, we're in the final process of approval of this document. And I think what I, as a council member, am most interested in this point is what is the input from this, from this body, from obviously the Complete Streets Commission, and then from the public in the document? So at this point, you know, while it's, the council gave its guiding, guiding principles early on in the document's formation, as it's the final document now and it's up for approval this evening, I think it's, if there's something in the document that you have commented on or you want reconsideration on, or you want to talk to the council about, now is the time to do that. And so if that's something that you think the council should look at or consider as we make a final vote, and then that would be something that, that could be noted as it went to the council. So and just at the outset, because as I've said, I'm not going to talk much tonight unless I get a question like that and not going to vote, I just want to say thank you to all of you and the staff for all the work that you put in to the document to date. So, thank you.
I will say that, that I think is, as often happens from Councilmember Mueller, that does clarify the process very neatly. One of the things that we are asked to do tonight is comment to council. So indeed, rather than ask for a response tonight, I should simply add that as a comment to go forward with as part of the review tonight, that that would make the legibility and interface with the public and the users better, I think, if we declared a goal without, without qualifying it related to other goals. And then I had a couple of more comments. And I think Sarah actually brought this issue up as well. I have a couple of tick marks from the staff report where the TMP is described and broken down into its roughly four different categories. And in the summary, and I'm sorry, I don't see the page number because I probably put a staple through on my print, the darn thing. Regional projects are noted as the city would not lead the project but would partner with other agencies. My response to reading that is, so what is the action item? For example, the action item might be staff will identify matching staff at adjacent agencies and schedule meetings to discuss these issues or to define the issues and parse what our respective goals and actions can be. Or it might be that the city manager will form an ad hoc group with the county manager, town manager, city manager, city manager, and, and regional agencies in the spring of 2021 to discuss moving forward these goals. That would be an action item, and that would reassure those of us who stressed starting in 2017 that the TMP needed to include a roadmap to move regional issues forward. These regional issues impact us. In the case of anything involving Facebook property and some Sobrato and Bohannon and Tarleton, we also create the issues. But we cannot simply move our chairs back from the monitor and say, oh, I don't have a key that I can press that solves that. That cannot be the answer or nothing will happen. Though there has to be advocacy or coordination or combination thereof that is part of our plan. Otherwise, the plan reads as just a list. I don't mean to misunderstand the plan. I realize that we don't define projects and say how much they'll cost and how big the scope will be and who's going to pay for it, not in the TMP. But I think at least some, maybe many of those who have spoken across our eight previous meetings would very much appreciate to see that Menlo Park intends some kind of an action item. This would, oh, then I also wanted to note that in the list of the five regional projects, could we clarify whether the Dunbarton Corridor project includes the approach to the bridge and coordination with East Bay jurisdictions about their end of the bridge? Because in order to make a dedicated bus lane, for example, effective, we would have to have that coordination. I'd like to add that one of the property owners in Bayfront, with his own money, hired a transportation consultant and an engineer in order to determine whether or not a bus rapid transit system could be made attractive. Over a couple of meetings with this property owner, I gave some feedback as to what level of improvement over the typical automobile commute might be necessary to seriously tempt drivers from the East Bay to take the alternative to their personal automobiles. The initial effort by the consultants was to demonstrate a 30% reduction in travel time. It was my suggestion that that was not impactful enough to get peoples out of their, people out of their cars. And less than four months later, with somewhat more aggressive engineering, they were able to calculate that they could move people in at a 50% reduction in travel time. So it would be terrific if the TMP included in the rail, in the Dunbarton Corridor project, in other words, Bayfront Expressway and its many intersections, the continuation across the bridge. You all have heard me say before that short of the Dunbarton Rail, which in fairy tale land might take only three or four years to build, but in reality, 15, 20 years, a bus bridge as a direct competitor to automobile travel could be achieved much more quickly than that. So having spoken at length, I apologize if I could ask staff through the chair if the auto bridge is assumed to be included in the second bullet, the Dunbarton Corridor project? And if so, will we be working on suggestions from private parties as well as from our hired consultants? And will we be coordinating with agencies in the East Bay?
So. I can't see everyone. Okay, good.
Okay, so, yes. So the Dunbarton Corridor project, yes, we're looking at a kind of a, what you call the high occupants of vehicle toll lane, and it wouldn't just be Bayfront Expressway, we would need it to kind of connect with the bridge itself as well. So we have the details in the plan are not all there because it's kind of a planning document. As we move through the process, there would be additional work. So it doesn't include all of the work that's needed. So we would definitely engage with the East Bay officials as well as Caltrans, who actually manage and operates Bayfront Expressway and the bridge. So it's going to be definitely a multi-jurisdiction project, and we would need to look at a longer connection, not just within Menlo Park.
Great, wonderful. And if that private party plan has not come forward to you, let me know. I would love to encourage that to be put forward, either to engineering or to council, wherever it would make most sense to come first. And I think that's all the comments I had, other than, Ray, you deserve this, you started this. I want to compliment council for having Ray, you deserve this. You started this. I want to compliment council for having persisted on our local and quality life, quality of life issues in spite of having up to, I think, three meetings per week on the pandemic issues. And albeit this is a three year process, but it's so good to see that it it continues to move forward and is ready for final approval within weeks. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, Henry. And just for clarification, I will also be abstaining from vote tonight since we are the final vote will be coming to council and was planning to state that later, but we'll state that now, just same as council member Mueller. So I cannot see other council members and who might be interested in speaking at this point.
Nash, it's Jen Wallison.
Jen, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. So first, I just want to compliment the staff for this document. I thought it was very forward thinking and well designed. And given the orange sky that we all experienced last week, I think the emphasis on sustainability and reducing vehicle miles traveled and looking at different ways of getting around is very timely and appreciated. I also want to point out perhaps her framing what we have witnessed during the pandemic, which is a increase in the number of people in our communities who are taking up bicycling and using our neighborhood streets to recreate and to walk. And I think that just reinforces the direction that this TMP was already heading in. And it's great to see that 7.5% of employees in Menlo Park are already commuting by bicycle. One thing that I didn't see was the increased usage of e-bikes and other emerging technologies. It talked about ride share and some other things and scooter and bike share, but it didn't talk about this new electrified mobility, which could really assist for people of all ages and abilities getting around in the future. And you all know that I love e-biking. I think to Henry's point and to my earlier question, there's really two ways to go about this. In terms of figuring out this congestion management kind of quandary, one is, you know, per Henry's suggestion would be to eliminate the second sentence in the goal that was developed and approved by council. The other would be to embrace the definition and the understanding that adding and making it easier and faster for single occupancy vehicles to get around town actually doesn't help with congestion. And page 16 of the document actually addresses that. I already read the first paragraph under congestion management. But the second paragraph reads, "Since Menlo Park is largely built out, the most efficient ways to accommodate growing demand on roadways are by reducing the number of vehicles on the road during peak travel times and more efficiently using the existing street network." And so I think that the current definition is an acknowledgement to induce demand, which is something we've talked about in this committee before, how by widening our roads or making it easier for single occupancy vehicles, we're just going to get more single occupancy vehicles. And that if we keep doing what we're doing, we're not going to meet not only our sustainability, safety, greenhouse gas goals, but we're also not even going to meet our congestion management goals. And so I definitely am not in favor of changing the definition and would strongly urge council to maintain the definition. And to that effect, I would like to see, my husband's so sweet, he's delivering dinner. I would like to see the document kind of cleaned up and and rectified in a way that, as Henry was suggesting, reduces confusion for the reader, but in a totally different way, which is acknowledging what type of congestion management we're looking for. And that goes to also when we're looking at the metrics for success, looking at, you know, how, what is the mode shift in our community? Because I think that will tell how successful we're being in moving people out of cars and onto different modes of transportation. So that's what I have to say about congestion management. Regarding the list of projects and the tiers, one thing I noticed was those little circles that were on page 41 that show the strength of each of the goals being met has kind of disappeared off the the project list in the tiers. And I just want to make sure that we're capturing which goals are being addressed by which projects going forward so that as council or as staff is trying to reach certain goals, especially like sustainability goals now with our climate action plan, that it's very obvious which of those projects is meeting those goals because right now you don't know, besides the little car or bike, you really don't know which goal is being addressed in the document. And I I sent in a, I apologize for it being sent in so late, busy days, but I sent in a document outlining a bunch of feedback that I have. But in general, I really think it's it's a great document and I applaud this committee for the hard work that has gone into it. Oh, one more thing I did want to point out because I know that the Hohm family, I believe, is on this call. I think we need to be careful when we talk about cut through traffic and what makes a neighborhood and what makes an arterial. We have many residents in our community who live on many different types of streets. And just because somebody lives on Willow Road or Santa Cruz Avenue or another street that is traveled on by many users, it doesn't mean that that's not a neighborhood. And I think that we need to keep that in mind when we are talking about neighborhoods and cut through traffic as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen. I'm looking for, actually, I cannot see, so perhaps someone else can tell me whether anyone else is
Adina Levin's holding up her hand.
Thank you so much. Adina, please.
Okay, so I have several different comments, mostly about the funding and implementation strategy in the committee feedback and requested action. So one recommendation that I would have for the implementation of this plan and want to echo what some fellow committee members have said in praising staff in assimilating all of the information and making this you know, clear to community members. So really, a excellent job in synthesizing everything and making this into a useful report. A couple of of implementation recommendations are about prioritizing the implementation in as much as it supports the goals of the Climate Action Plan. We've all been experiencing over the last month, the severe problems caused by climate change in terms of fires and air quality and it being really difficult to go outdoors and breathe, which is not really optional for human and other life. And so I think prioritizing implementation with regard to fulfilling the Climate Action Plan is a strong recommendation that I would like to make, and the Complete Streets Commission will be reviewing this, and the Complete Streets Commission has already expressed a desire to support the city council, to ask city council for charter and then to support the city council in terms of aligning the implementation with the Climate Action Plan, including the prioritization of implementate for implementation of projects that reduce vehicle miles traveled in addition to other strategies relating to, for example, transportation, demand management and and public transportation. So that is one recommendation about implementation. Another recommendation about funding for this plan is certainly as projects flow into the Capital Improvement Plan, the next full year is the 2021, 2021, 2022 CIP. However, one thing that city council members did say when adopting the first piece of this year's budget, obviously, this COVID year is very, very difficult in terms of budget, and the city council approved an interim budget, said that they would come back and continue to review the budget and also expressed a potential interest and willingness in utilizing some city reserves to implement high priority programs that were yet to finish coming forward. For example, one example that the city council gave for that was the Climate Action Plan, which had not yet been approved when the budget was done. And so council members said, well, we might be interested in adding some more money to help implement the Climate Action Plan. And it is the case that some of the transportation projects, in order to get started in implementing them, there are budget freezes on positions in transportation that would prevent such projects from starting to get worked on. And so that would be another recommendation to have in the city council on prioritizing the implementation that would fulfill the Climate Action Plan would be to look at the 2020 budget and consider that objective or consider that willingness that council members had described and, you know, apply that to fulfilling the Climate Action Plan, even in 2020. So that is another piece of the recommendation. In terms of the implementation recommendation, I had mentioned the Complete Streets' interest in the design standards, and I am not going to make any specific recommendations about that at this time in the TMP, but do want to flag for staff and city council that this is something that the Complete Streets Commission has said that the commission is very strongly interested in, and so that commission will probably or may well have recommendations relating to the guidelines and standards following our review. So those are my main recommendations. I have two more comments. One comment is building on what Commissioner Riggs talked about in terms of the Dunbarton Corridor and the possibility for shorter term bus improvements. One thing that has happened at the regional level over the last six months or so is something that is really important and has not gotten the press and attention that it deserves because of being kind of drowned out by COVID, which is that the Metropolitan Transportation Commission has already, as part of its Plan Bay Area Blueprint and Plan Bay Area process, has adopted a strategy that was first put forward by advocates from regional think tanks and advocacy organizations SPUR and TRANSFORM to have a regional bus, express bus network to work in conjunction with the regional express lane network. And that is something that MTC had adopted as a strategy to incorporate in the region's express lane network. It is included and prioritized as part of the Plan Bay Area Blueprint. And there are three routes that have been identified for high priority implementation. And one of these routes is an express bus route connecting Oakland and Redwood City coming through Menlo Park. And that is very exciting as the potential to provide what Henry Riggs had talked about in terms of a time competitive travel option. And so I would encourage staff potentially to reference this as some updated information that is a regional thing that is moving forward to be, you know, paying attention to that may help deliver some of our Dunbarton Corridor transportation goals. And I have sent the information about that to staff, including the reference to the staff reports at the MTC. And the last thing that comment I would like to make is with regard to the question about how to address the congestion management concept. I was, I also really noticed in the section on Vision Zero and collisions that there are, you know, the downtown area is a significant collision hotspot, and this is certainly an area where there are, you know, people get to using cars and using other modes. And so if you think about, well, how do we improve convenient travel? If someone is able to get downtown by walking or using a you know, human powered bicycle or using an e-bike from two or three miles away, then that is, you know, one more person that does not need to drive in a car, and that is less car congestion on the road. So I would strongly encourage, you know, not decoupling those concepts because providing those alternatives is something that helps alleviate that congestion, and they are, in fact, closely related. So I would strongly encourage retaining the connection that was put forward in the council's description of that goal and would support the Jen Wallison's recommendation to improve the consistency by having the multimodality aspect of congestion reduction made more consistent throughout. And that is the end of my comments.
Thank you, Adina. Again, would anyone like to speak? I cannot see people.
Yep.
Thank you, Jackie.
A polite little hand raiser, you know.
And Henry as well.
So I have a couple of comments. First, I would like to say I really, I would echo everybody who liked the infographics and the way it's laid out and the way that you distilled months and months of conversation over hours and salad and pizza. Yeah, it was really, I I I thought you did a good job and I, it was easy to navigate and all those things. I would also agree that I would say, I think, any efforts that we use to improve our bike and pedestrian routes through the city are going to be useful, whether in up traffic times or down traffic times. And when I first moved to the Bellhaven neighborhood, there's this mysterious no left turn sign on Hamilton, and I did not understand it at all. I thought it was just something against the new development until I asked the neighbors, who explained to me that Bayfront Expressway used to back up, and I thought that was crazy talk because like, when would that ever happen? And so my point is like, traffic goes up and down, and so if we put a lot of effort into things that are for up traffic times, then we don't have the same, the benefits that will accrue and be useful. And to that end, the original, at the very start of the document, it says that all four goals will need to include multimodal solutions. So I'm in support of all four goals, continuing to include multimodal solutions. And because congestion can be so linked to cars without thinking of the other solutions, I think it's even more important to include that extra bit in there to make sure people understand that it's about all four of them. I do wonder if, as we talked about the sort of living document idea, as we plan forward from it, is there a way that the document can be linked to sort of a living spreadsheet? So that at any time, you'd be able to go on and see what does this look list look like along with all the things that have been added? And so you can sort of see where we were and where we are, whether you color code the things that are added since we made it or not, like, that might help. But I think it would be helpful to be able to see the I think it would be helpful to be able to see the whole picture and not have to look at different layers of it. And then also to something Katie said, it reminded me of the last um. Uh Complete Streets meeting, and one of the things that we pondered, or at least I heard somebody ponder was. When things came before Complete Streets or came before council, that there would be this set of criteria that we would always be looking at. And maybe the transportation management plan is kind of the place to put that, that when a thing comes before Complete Streets. And maybe it's a council thing that it would include the existing right of way, and so we would look at. Um you know, shoulder to shoulder, like what are the options available to the city? Because I agree that that it is city land and in the end. Things change and we have to consider um how to keep our residents safe and healthy and happy as they get around town. And uh that's really the most of it. Yeah, I'll stop there.
Thank you, Jackie.
So Chair Nash, it's Christiane. If I could just um add one, one thing, I know um I think there was a comment in the chat about what we, what staff's looking for.
Yes, please.
Um so um I mean, I have the slides showing up here what we're um what kind of specific thing that we're looking for. But if you have any um comments on the um what identifies the funding and implementation strategy you want to change, you know. You have some changes that you want to um suggest or um. You know, improve on it, uh we'd be open to hearing that kind of feedback.
So this is Andrew, can I, thank you for that. Chair Nash, can, may I speak?
Yes, please. Thank you. Andrew.
Uh so this is, this is such a. As it relates to the strategy and implementation program. Um which really ties into the bullet point above it as well, which is getting the word out about the plan to the community. If I take a couple steps back, I mean, I I'm just so excited about this document. This document came out of the general plan update. The circulation element within the general plan update. A very well done general plan update, very well done circulation element, and this, the T M P coming out of that is a culmination of. Uh some really forward thinking stuff. So as we get forward thinking and as we, you know, the messaging when we were doing the general plan update was, look, help is on the way. If you just hang in there, there is some method to this madness. Someone is driving the bus, right? And then this T M P, the circulation element transforming in the T M P was, okay, here's the bus, here's the, here's the. The routes we're going to be going down, and here's what our network's going to look like as it relates to, you know, solving for. A community wide transportation issues. So you know, we get into the funding and implementation strategy and. Uh as I, as I look to the fourth bullet point, which is a recommendation to city council. The questions that, for instance, I get asked um is, okay, great, so what's happening when? And you know, I don't want to go back and revisit the last meeting uh in depth. There is that fundamental tension of it's a flexible program. But yet, uh what's going to happen when and whose call is it in terms of what happens when and giving the the needed flexibility to staff? Uh and at the same time, having something memorialized as to what is the plan going forward. So you know, getting the word out and talking to the funding and implementation, implementation strategy. Is that much harder when it's a fungible plan, when it is a to be decided plan, and I know these two tensions have to exist. Uh I'm not real sure how to reconcile them other because to the direct question of, okay, so what does this mean for this? So what does it mean for that? And you know, how's this all going to work? It's really a TBD and to be decided. Um and then you throw in the electeds and you know, the vagaries of how that works, so. Let me just ask one question, and if um Chair Nash, if you'd be willing to uh field a question, I'll throw it out and see what you, see if you've got a response to it. Because this is going to inform uh my thinking. If you were to take off your city council hat and put back on your. Complete Streets hat, right? And having sat in front of meeting after meeting where people were talking about this issue and that issue and this sidewalk and this intersection. You know, and in those times, I suspect that you would have liked to have some type of roadmap for how things get done and when they get done. And then putting on a uh a um an elected hat, which is, it gives a lot of power for the electeds to decide what happens when. And we heard a lot in the last meeting about uh two particular words, one was safety and one was externalities. Uh which to me just mean. What is happening in the moment for a particular council member may decide, and you know, the discussion we had about the goal setting and how. Uh capricious that may or may not be for a particular part of the city. So my question to you is this, how do you reconcile in our, and can you reconcile? The fungibility of the plan with a desire for the community to have a vision. For how this is all going to work and that there is, this isn't just another plan that's going to go on the shelf. Uh as plan number sixteen, you know, plan number eighty two uh for the community. How do you reconcile those two? If you're willing to answer that question, because that's going to inform my thinking, because that's my fundamental tension.
I am not sure how to answer that question very honestly, because that is a concern of mine too. Um we do do a lot of master plans and they are um not always utilized. I do believe that this one will be. I think that this has um a lot of effort that went into it and has a very. Um has a comprehensive list of projects and. Because TIF projects require, are required to be in the T M P. I believe that this will be an active plan that will be utilized in order to. To decide how we spend our TIF funds and um it will be. It it won't just sit on a shelf. I'm very interested in other people's um Councilmember Mueller's opinion and others.
So I I I want to refrain as much as possible from comments tonight because I really don't want to color the conversation. I think that the plan will be uh obviously a very important uh document going forward. I do think that there will be some room for. Uh the council to go ahead and adapt to things that happen over time. Um great example is, right now, we're seeing in a COVID nineteen pandemic, which is altering how we're using streets downtown Menlo Park. Uh you cannot in a document predict everything that will happen uh within the future, but you can go ahead and capture all of your priorities and the best that you have available. Terms of public planning and input into a, into a document to serve as a guidepost, but there is. The ability for council, uh council uh prudent discretion. Uh so um I don't think the document's going to be one that just sits on a shelf. I also don't think it's going to be as rigid as the Ten Commandments. I think it's going to be. Something that that we look to and use uh as a, as a, as a guidepost for the way that we conduct transportation engineering in the city.
I'm wondering if there's any staff members or consultants who want to say anything.
So I I think, um, thank you, Chair, Chair Nash. I think just a couple of of notes. One, in in response to this particular question, I think the, the prioritization criteria and the the framework that this provides. As we talked about in some of the first questions that came up tonight. Will will give us that ability to assess things as they come up and then understand how they. What what at least the staff recommendation should be in terms of how they rank against priorities that may have, may already be on the books. So I think that framework is where we see the, certainly the most value in the, the plan. Guiding the those kind of discussions and and those future decisions um that that we know will be out there, even if we don't know exactly what they look like. Today, so then just a couple of other things I wanted to to mention in response to. A couple of the other comments that came up tonight. So there is an e-bike and roller share uh program on the citywide list, so I think there was a question about. How that, how uh e-bikes were were addressed, so that that does exist in the the document. And then I think just as you're, you're thinking about how to formulate um your feedback and recommendations tonight. I think we've heard a couple of things um that we could a- address going, going forward. Things like um, you know, adding a street classification map to the, the appendix to to tie in from the circulation element. Adding the the scoring to the the project list that's in the the appendix as well. Heard a couple of suggestions for looking at a a tool or or a map to track the the new project ideas. So I think if those are things that the committee is interested in, in passing along as part of your feedback tonight. Um those were, those were a couple that that I captured. I think I will need to go back and listen to the video to get, to get all of them. Um and make sure we 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 get them all. Um but I I think we, we definitely heard some, some great feedback tonight um that we can be able to, to um. Move move along in the the process as well. Um and the the last thing I'll note is, I I think um Ms. Staley started the the discussion tonight about the regional coordination. Uh that we already have in place, and I think um I know we don't um talk about this a lot, but. But we do have a number of places where we coordinate across the the region on on these um critical infrastructure needs. Um we have staff that sit on multiple different technical advisory committees with um staff from across San Mateo and Santa Clara counties. Um the city um public works directors meet regularly, um as well as the the city managers as well. So there there is a lot of coordination that's happening across the region um in order to to prioritize and and identify the. The projects going forward, um but what the regional project list gives us is really a. Place to point back to, to to regional partners like MTC um that that bring dollars to the table for for these efforts and and can mobilize to to do these multi-county projects. Uh if we can point back to a project being listed in the transportation master plan, that there's community support for it. Um we're more likely to to get more attention from them than we would be if, if it was just me or or Christiane or any of our staff members knocking, knocking on their door without the backing of the plan. So this, this gives us the tools that we'll be able to to use going forward and in more of those conversations. And with that, I I know um I had a number of folks that had um other commitments tonight, so I will, I will stop, stop there, but we're happy to answer any other questions you have.
Will staff be looking for motions or um for comments but not motions?
Staff is looking for a motion, and I will actually ask staff, once we're at that place, I will actually step out of it and ask if staff can take over. Because I want to stay as impartial as as possible in this. Deliberation. So um I I cannot actually, is it possible to put the speaker view, I'm sorry, the gallery view up so we can see everyone? So what I'm, what I'd like to do right now is find out how many, um how much more discussion we have. There had been some. Not to try and curtail it at all, but there had been a thought to have a break at this point, and the question is whether we want. Um there's going to be much more discussion and we should, um whether people want a a break before that or to wait till the end or how you want to handle it, so. How many more? There's, there's several people who have not spoken yet. Um I'm wondering. If you'd like to break at this point or continue to the um. Through the motion, once following discussion, more discussion, any thoughts? Okay, well, I would, um, why don't we go ahead and continue the discussion then? So who else would like to speak? And. Jen.
Yeah, I already spoke ninety five percent of what I was going to say, but one more thing occurred to me if we're going to be making a motion. Um I'm still concerned about the inclusion of the um flyovers along Dumbarton Expressway. And um I would be interested in a motion stating. That that is not something that is um consistent with many of the goals in the plan. And if 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 there's others that um feel the same way, it looks like Sarah's shaking her head yes.
So so i- if we're, and I am. Are there other people who haven't spoken? Because if they haven't, then it would be great to hear from them, and. If everyone who wants to speak has spoken, I would be happy to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was unmuted. So um Diane, please go ahead.
Diane, we can't hear you. Are you muted?
Is that better? Okay, I agree. Agree with the point that Jen just raised. I don't have a lot of substantive comments to add to the document. I I think it's a great document. It's been vetted over several years and. Um you know, I I heard Henry's suggestion about changing the language around congestion management and that goal, and. I would not be comfortable with those changes, although I I I understand where he's coming from. Um I would be in favor of adding some language along the lines of what Jen Wolison just suggested about the flyover that. I think when that discussion came up, and this was probably about a year and a half or two years ago, that most of this committee was was deeply uncomfortable with that. And so it would be good in the final document to kind of memorialize that somehow. Um I think that Josie Gaylord and Adina and their comments covered the climate aspects really well, and I don't have anything to add to that except that. I very much appreciate the update in the introduction about the more recent climate plan that was adopted in July. And also explicitly calling out the twenty five percent VMP reduction goal in the beginning. That was great that that was added. And also raises the issue that if we don't hurry up and adopt this T M P, that we're going to keep finding ourselves in cycles of of uh. Adding new updates and changing things, and so I would be in favor of moving it forward as quickly as we can to avoid that continual update process. Um and finalizing this with the idea that, yes, it's a living document, but I think a lot went into this, and I would like to see it finalized. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Diane. Adina, did you want to speak?
Um yeah, so I, if, if everyone who has just wanted to speak has spoken, I would be happy to uh try a motion. Okay, um and so um I I'm not seeing any objections, and so I would like to. Make a motion to recommend approval of the transportation master plan to city council. Um with the following um additional recommendations. And um one is to make an implementation recommendation to um. Align the implementation of the transportation master plan with the climate action plans. Um general goals of reducing greenhouse gas emissions and uh its uh specific goals to. Reduce vehicle miles uh traveled and um. Uh and in the interest of that implementation recommendation um to have the complete. And 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 tell me if I should hold that to Complete Streets or do it here. Um but to have the Complete Streets Commission uh play a role in advising city council on. The those implementation recommendations to align the implementation with the climate action plan. Um I would add to the motion to staff to incorporate the many good recommendations mentioned here. About maintaining the updated list of projects in a way that the. about maintaining the updated list of projects in a way that the community can, you know, see it and digest it. I don't think that itemizing those things, those suggestions in a motion is necessarily needed. So unless staff says it is, I would just say to take the recommendations from, uh, you know, this, this group in terms of updating the plan. And I will stop there.
And let me, Christian, could you take over at this point, please? Uh, the chair, chairing so that I can step out of it and be completely impartial.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, would, yeah, would you take some friendly amendments for a second?
Um, well, there needs to be a second first and then friendly amendments.
Okay. Thank you for the clear, I will second with friendly amendment, a second.
Okay.
Will you consider some friendly amendments?
Sure.
Okay. Um, I, I'm interested in reaffirming the current council approved definition of congestion management, which maintains the, the wording that was approved. That's one. And then two would be a note about the flyover and how that is not consistent with many of the goals of the TMP.
Okay. And I wanna accept them separately. And in the, in the first one, I think because it already has that component, I don't think it needs to have an amendment to restate something that's already in the plan. But your point earlier about clarifying the language throughout the plan to make sure that both of those components are in the understanding and definition of congestion.
Management.
Right. Um, I, I, I think that is a good amendment to clarify in the rest of the plan. And then on the second, yes. Any more discussion?
So just, just one, one point of clarification so that we, we make sure that we have your, your intentions totally clear. So the Bayfront, or excuse me, the Dunbarton Corridor project that has been referenced tonight. It also includes a high occupancy toll lane to connect from the East Bay across the bridge and to 101 at the Marsh interchange. So without the grade separations that are proposed as part of that project, we also cannot accomplish the high occupancy toll lane. So the, the shoulder running bus lanes that are, are a shorter term project are still a separate regional project on the list. But I just wanted to make sure that the committee was aware that the, the high occupancy toll lane on Bayfront Expressway was part of that Dunbarton Corridor project as well.
Is there, is there any way to phrase the amendment about expressing the concern about the flyovers without saying something that would preclude the city from considering bus lanes, which could, you know, really be a great way of relieving car congestion without extra cars? So, um, will the proposer of the amendment have a restatement of it that doesn't preclude the good goal that Ms. Nagaya mentioned?
As you stated, Ms. Levin.
Um, so I, so, so, so how about this? So, um, basically making comments to express reservations about designs for bus facilities that may conflict with other goals of the plan. So it's more comment.
Bus facilities or the high occupancy vehicles? Cause is, is Ms. Nagaya speaking about carpooling, a carpool lane?
Yes, that's, that's correct. So it's a carpool lane. Uh, it's, it's an express lane, similar to what's being constructed on, on Highway 101 right now. It would be part of the, the regional express lane network. So you can carpool, use it, buses can use it. And then you can pay a fee into, to, to get access to the lane as well. And the fee changes based on the congestion levels on the adjacent single occupant vehicle lanes.
And, and the access for single vehicles depends on whether the speed goals are being met. So if the lane is filled up by buses and carpools and, you know, and the driving speed slows to 45 miles an hour, then no more individual drivers can get on. So that, that's how it's defined. So it doesn't, it, it doesn't say as many people as want to pay the toll can use it as a single occupant. It prioritizes the higher occupant and then if there's room, lets people pay.
Yeah. So, um, I appreciate the clarification, Ms. Nagaya, on the, the package that that brings. And I think I would be more comfortable if, if you would accept Adina to modify the friendly amendment to express reservations about the flyover, but support of high occupancy, of, uh, shared lanes and things like that.
Okay. Yeah, I would, yeah, I would accept that rephrasing because I think that will help guide future consideration of design options that can achieve our goals of traffic congestion relief without adding cars as well as the community concerns. So yes.
And, and by flyover, any elevated structure is what, what the fundamental concern is. So something as an example, if we needed to provide an, an elevated structure to connect Bayfront Expressway and Highway 101 at Marsh, it would not, you would not want to see that elevated.
I believe there was. Yeah, I believe the specifics concerns that I'm getting at are the access points to the Bellhaven neighborhood. So I don't know if that Marsh Bayfront example has access issues or not. But the intent is a reservation about a flyover that would impede the circulation of Bellhaven residents. And that would also invest dollars in, in, uh, in single occupancy vehicle trips. Ms. Levin, is that how you interpret it?
Um, yeah. And do you wanna, you know, give a little bit more clarity about what the caveats are, like, like what things should future councils be, you know, considering about what to be wary of with that type of project?
Well, and I would also invite the other committee members to weigh in on this as well. I'd like to hear from them too.
So I think it's like the, the, so the, the motion as it is, is recommend affirmative to council, prioritize implementation aligning with the climate action plan, recommending that complete streets commission support the council with the climate action plan. And, um, uh, provide caveats to the recommendation of the, um, uh, Bayfront and Dunbarton Express lanes with regard to how they may conflict with other goals in the plan. And we'll make the motion that way and we can have further discussion.
I guess my question is, is this, does that, is the way that you just stated it, does that hit on the flyover component? I just remember that being, even when we addressed it about a year ago, it was still, it was, it was a red flag. And so I just want to make sure that.
Okay. So add the word flyovers to the community. You know, like with, 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 with caveats about designs that have flyovers and how they may, uh, have community impact and, um, you know, be in tension with other goals of the plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I just make one clarifying, clarifying point? So the, the Dunbarton Corridor project, as it was envisioned in this plan, did not have flyovers. So there, there was an earlier iteration of the Samtrans work on the Dunbarton Corridor and Bayfront Expressway that had flyover ramps between University and Bayfront Expressway. This proposed project would have access impacts on the, the Chilco and, excuse me, the Chilco and Chrysler intersections and potentially the, the Willow and Bayfront and Willow and University intersections. But there were not flyovers, which are, like, if you picture the, the 101 and 85 interchange in Mountain View, that, that's, that's what we picture with the flyover. There were no flyovers proposed as part of this project.
Okay. Then the motion doesn't need to refer to things that don't exist.
Thank you. Sorry. I just wanted to make sure that you're giving the council the direction that you want to see reflected in the plan.
A clarifying question, if I may, and this is to, to staff. It's related to the recommendation prioritizing implementation and alignment with the climate action plan. I mean, of course, I'm in support of the climate action plan. But from a mechanic standpoint, what does that mean for what, what you're doing with the TMP and the process you had envisioned up to now for prioritizing, elevating, going after and executing? What does this mean if that were to be included? And how would that change any of the procedures or processes that you had envisioned?
So I think that we would look at the projects with, because of course the climate action plan was recently adopted. So when we did the scoring and everything, we had, we didn't have all the details of that climate action plan. And so we can look at that as, you know, another factor in terms of which projects might move forward first. But we would, at this point, I mean, at least based on the guidance, we wouldn't change the, the projects that are in the two different tiers.
The potential within the ranking of them, there might be some shifting based on this added layer of decision criteria. All right?
Yes, yes. So it's, I mean, so the tier one aren't ranked in any particular order. Like they're all kind of on somewhat equal footing, so to speak. And so when we look at what we might put into the first fiscal year or the next fiscal year CIP, we could look at, you know, some of the projects that would help to meet that climate action goals and, and how, how that fits in with other resource concerns. Um, and I, I want to say one more thing about the suggestion of the Dunbarton project, like those caveats, because, you know, nothing in this plan, except for the kind of small and easy things, will come forward without community input. And so community input is a given for large projects. And so I think it's just highlighting the importance of addressing the, you know, community feedback and consistency with multiple goals of the plan for this project in particular. But that is just, you know, reinforcing something that is a truism, which is that things that come forward will need to have community input.
All right. I, I would, I don't know who was slated to go next. Did I jump somebody in line? Um, I would agree with Jen that the, um, I think anything that limits access to the Bellhaven neighborhood contributes to congestion in the Bellhaven neighborhood. So it would, the efforts to reduce congestion would, would be, I would assume in those, like in a lot of that, it's non-residents. And so I would prioritize residents in that instance. I get the regional thing, but, um, reducing those access points, it's already bad when it's bad. So reducing those access points would just make it that much worse. And so it would increase congestion dramatically, I think.
Okay. So in terms of the wording about community concerns, clarify that with access to neighborhood residents. Any more discussion? Jen?
I'm sorry. One, one more thing, but actually you had brought up Adina, which was regarding the standards vis a vis the toolkit that was presented. And in the motion, perhaps asking the council or suggesting to the council to direct the complete streets commission to work with staff on making sure that those toolkit items actually get integrated into our city standards.
Um, so I would accept that as a friendly amendment pending comment from staff that that is a valid thing to recommend.
So in, in terms of the, the policy direction, I, I think that's fine. The, the place where we will be struggling to, to implement it is, is the resources. So I, I think it's fine to, to pass along the recommendation that that's what you would like to see. But if it's a new work effort for the complete streets commission, that's something that we'll, we'll have to work through with the, the council as part of their, their priorities and goal setting and, and priorities for, for staff in the, the coming months. So I think the policy direction we, we, I, I think is clear from, from what you, you've requested.
Okay. That sounds good. And from my understanding from a prep call with staff before this, was that the process of converting the toolkit into standards, the guidelines into standards was something that staff is working on at some pace. And so I understand it would be a big problem to have the complete streets commission work on something that like, you know, staff wasn't working on and would be brand new work. And so I, I, I think that there's a version of this that would be like as staff is working on it. You know, like, like have the complete streets play a role in the thing that is happening as opposed to suggesting a new and different thing that is not happening. Okay. Any more discussion prior to voting? All right. Going once, going twice.
I think we can, we can take over from here to, to handle the voting part if that helps.
Yeah.
Do you want to do that?
Yeah, that, that would be welcome.
Uh, sure. I can call a vote on the stated motion. Uh, all those in favor? If you'd just like to raise your hand on the screen, I think we can catch it that way. Looks like we have five in favor. Thank you very much. Uh, all those abstaining?
I think there were six that raised their hand.
Six and, sorry, I missed Sarah Staley's background. It's a little hard to see. Sorry about that. Okay. So we had six in favor. Uh, any abstaining?
I'm abstaining, but I don't think you can see me in the darkness of my backyard.
It is a little dark. Yes. Uh, we have two abstaining. Uh, and that's everyone. So the motion does pass.
Congratulations. It's an awesome plan.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
There actually is another step. Is to discuss, uh, discussion of schedule and next step. And, um, actually, Ms. Troy, could you just give an overview? I know that we had the presentation, but this is, well, actually I've got the information here. So essentially it's coming, it is at the transportation master plan and oversight and outreach committee here today. The plan is to have it go to. The plan is to have it go to Complete Streets Commission on October 14th and to City Council then on November 10th. Anything else to be added?
No, that's, that's correct. So unless anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer those, too.
So any clarifying questions before we go to public comment? Seeing none, Patrick, do we have any public comment?
Sure, let me check really quick. I don't see any right now. I would like to remind anyone who may have joined us recently, if you do have a public comment, please just press that raise hand button, and I will be able to get to you. So I will wait a moment, let's see if anyone has a question. Going once. Looks like we do have a question from username A-Hom. Hi there, you are now the public speaker.
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for, this meeting is really important as a residence on Willow Road. And I just want to piggyback on what Jen Wilson said and to say that although we live on a class, different classified street, it does not mean it's not a neighborhood. And whatever projects the city council decides, it should not be on the expense of us and, and our safety as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll wait another moment. If you do have a question or comment, please just raise, press the raise hand button. All right, I think that seems to be about it, and I will return it back to you, Chair Nash. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so now we will open for committee discussion, if there is any. This is, again, regarding the discussion of schedule and next steps. And there is a request to have a motion and a second. Could staff clarify what you were looking for specifically, please?
So I, I don't think we actually need a, a motion and a second for this item, unless there's something specific that the committee wants to recommend.
Thank you so much. Is there any discussion? Does anyone, any comments? Jen Wilson?
I just have a question, Christiane and Nikki, about public outreach, about the plan and kind of how the plan is going to be framed for the community and its adoption. I think it goes, oh, Andrew, yeah. The, the, making sure that the expectations of what the document is and isn't, I would strongly encourage, as you go to the next step of adoption, that, that there's proper thought about that. If that makes, if that's clear.
Did, I'm not sure, did you have a specific recommendation on how?
Well, do you, how are you planning? So what, what is the outreach that you're planning to do as it heads to City Council? And, you know, especially vis-à-vis our conversation about congestion management? How, how are you going to be framing it to the community?
So I think that, one, I mean, we're notifying the community that the plan is being reviewed by, I mean, we, we notified them about the, this meeting. And then we are also going to be notifying them about the Complete Streets Commission meeting and the City Council meeting as we move forward. We also will, as part of like our, our report out to the council, will be including in the staff report your comments that you, you raised tonight, and especially the ones about congestion management. So I don't know if that answers your question, but that's kind of what we're looking forward as we move through the process.
Thank you. Are there any more, any more discussion? Does anyone see any need to make a motion? Having declared that, thank you all so much for this long process. It's been just an incredible journey. I have been along for most of it as an observer and just recently as a participant. I know you all have just done so much work as members for the last three years, and it's greatly appreciated. Thank you so much. And if there's nothing else, we will adjourn the meeting. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.